Welcome to the January 26, 2017 Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. Councilmember Bill Shacklet has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to introduce Candy Carter. Candy, come on up here. Candy is a friend of mine and she is a dear friend of our community. She has a ministry here in town that works for some folks and I've invited her to say a few things about her ministry and then do our opening prayer for us. Candy?
Thank you. First of all, good evening and I appreciate the privilege to come tonight and open you all up in prayer. I am Candy Carter and I run a ministry here in town called Last Call for Grace and we do a lot of different things, but one of the main things that we do is we go into our community and we feed about 1,000 individuals a week that are either homeless, near homeless, or in extreme poverty. And these individuals are of the most vulnerable of our population to crimes such as human trafficking. And so that is one of the things that we do is we aid and rescue for victims of human trafficking. So, we do have a goal to open up a safe house for victims here in Murfreesboro and have found a place in the county, so we appreciate any prayers or support in that.
Thank you, Candy.
Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening and I just want to thank you so much for these men and women that you have placed in leadership over our city. Father, I know that it is difficult sometimes to make the decisions that they have to make. Lord, I know that you will guide them in all truth and knowledge if they seek you. Father, I pray that you give them supernatural wisdom. And Father, also, I want to pray over our city. I pray, Lord, that this will be a city on our knees, that we will constantly be thinking of you, Lord, and looking to you for direction. I pray for the people in our city who are suffering from poverty, from homelessness, or victims of any kind. And I pray, Father, that you would set the captives free. We thank you for the privilege to serve you and I praise your holy name. Bless this meeting in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilmembers have a special presentation for you tonight. We had a ceremony at 3:00 today for one of our family members that's riding off into the sunset on his golf cart, so want to ask Tracy if you would come up. I came here and met Tracy for the first time. He doesn't remember it. In 1991, I made it from Grundy County to the state golf tournament that was here at Old Fort. And so got from a small town and a small school coming to Murfreesboro was like going to New York and came to Old Fort and got to meet Tracy who was there welcoming all the players that came in, him and Alan Richardson, who Alan's on our golf committee with, or commission with T double S double A. But since that time, long before involved in the city, have been able to meet Tracy and know Tracy and have grown up with his family. And I'm sad today that Tracy is retiring the city, but I'm more sad that the residents are losing someone who has been a champion not just for the golf community but for the youth in our community. Bloomfield Links, who many of y'all have been out to, you go out there on a Saturday and you've got 75 to 100 kids who are playing in a league. And that's Tracy's heart that has done that. I know the council's support and it supports those things, but Tracy is the one who has put all that together. So, want to read a proclamation for Tracy. Whereas Tracy Wilkins has served on the city golf department director for the past 30 years, and whereas before serving as director of golf for the city of Murfreesboro, he worked as the assistant golf professional at Chickasaw Country Club from 1983 to 1986. He played four years of collegiate golf and is a 1983 graduate of Union University in Jackson, Tennessee. We earned a bachelor of science degree in physical education with a minor in business administration. He graduated from Brentwood Academy in 1979. He's been married, and I would think he probably would say this is his greatest accomplishment, he's been married to Ann Wilkins for 34 years. They have two children, Lee Aikenbaugh and Chad Wilkins. Tracy has served on the Tennessee Section Board of Directors, president of the Middle Tennessee Chapter of the PGA, the Tennessee PGA Tournament Committee, the Tennessee PGA Awards Committee, the Tennessee PGA Membership Committee, the United Way of Rutherford County and, Rutherford and Cannon County Selection Committee. He was awarded being in the top 5% of his class for the PGA Business School, a two-time Golf Professional of the Year for the Middle Tennessee Chapter of the PGA, a two-time Merchandiser of the Year for the Middle Tennessee Chapter of the PGA, a seven-time member of the Tennessee PGA Cup Team. He has been a PGA member since May of 1986. Tracy did his apprenticeship at Chickasaw Country Club in Memphis from May of 1983 to December of 1986. The city of Murfreesboro deeply values his effective management and leadership, including the establishment of Bloomfield Links and a growing youth golf program. He has tirelessly served the city and the golf profession and has led Old Fort Golf Course virtually from the beginning and his imprint on the course is huge, is enormous. Through his leadership of the course, of the, through his leadership of the course's employees, Old Fort has become home to collegiate golf, high school golf championships, countless tournaments, and thousand rounds of golf, thousands of rounds of golf. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, and in recognition of his distinguished service to the community, to the city of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County, do hereby declare January 26, 2017 is a day to honor Tracy Wilkins and urge all the community to join as we extend our congratulations and wish him well in his future endeavors. Congratulations, Tracy.
Thank you. I just would like to say thank you for the opportunity. A lot of people have asked me now that you're going to retire, what are you going to do? You know, you work all this time to be able to get to do what you want to do. And all I can tell you is I've cheated you all a little bit because I've got to do, I've been blessed to do what I love to do for 30 years already. So, I don't know what I'm going to do next, but I know I've enjoyed the last 30 years. I thank you all for your service, the opportunity to be able to do what I do. And I guess the biggest thing that's come out of today, my son came up and told me after the ceremony this afternoon how proud he was of me. And I don't know that a father could ask for anything more. So, again, thank you for the opportunity and I'm not going anywhere. I'm still going to be involved with golf and the kids out there and I look forward to it and again, thank you.
Ann, why don't you stand up, Ann? Ann's a longtime employee of Old Fort as well. So, Tracy said this today that it's, or I think Rob said this, that when Tracy and Ann come home and they ask how their day was, they actually know because they work together every day. So, thank you for your service too, Ann. We'll move into the consent agenda. You have several items on your list. You also have a revised letter for Section F, recommendations of the risk manager, staff attorney.
If there's no questions or anything to pull out, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have the minutes of the January 5, 2017 special meeting and the January 5, 2017 regular meeting.
For approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move into second readings. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 16026, amending Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 11, Electricity, Section 11-1, 11-2, 11-3, dealing with the Murfreesboro Electric Department.
For approval. Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright. Go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Moving to new business. Pursuant to Resolution 16RPH60 adopted by the city council on November 17, 2016, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 7-point acres along Wilkinson Pike and Gresham Park Drive from General Office OG District, 2 acres, and single-family residential at 15RS 15 District, 5.6 acres, to mixed-use MU District and remove the Wilkinson Pike buffer on these properties. Tommy Smith, applicant 2016-448, noted this set public hearing was published on, in the January 9, 2015, 617 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. This first public hearing this evening is for you to consider zoning change requests made by Mr. Tommy Smith on behalf of the CM Gatton Trust for property that's located along the south side of Wilkinson Pike. And you can see the properties are shaded in the purple area on the screen before you. These properties are located south of Wilkinson Pike. One portion of the property is currently zoned OG and is located on the west side of Gresham Park Drive. The remainder of the property is on the east side of Gresham Park Drive and is zoned RS15. This request is actually a three-part request. The first part of this request is for you to consider zoning the OG property from OG to mixed-use MU. The second part of the request is to consider rezoning the RS15 portion of property from RS15 to MU, and MU is mixed-use district. And then the third part of the request is to remove the Wilkinson Pike buffer from that purple area, purple area only. This property is located south of a developed county single-family subdivision. What is directly across the street, some of, there are three houses currently there, but then some of them are no longer there due to the Good Friday tornado. But behind them, there is a developed single-family subdivision. To the south is undeveloped and developed land owned by Mr. Gatton. There's currently a Rooms To Go under construction and McDonald's on the corner. Of course Thornton's gas station's on the corner and the Chamber of Commerce is located very nearby as well. The properties to the south of the area located east of Gresham Park Drive is already zoned mixed-use. So, the request is for you to also zone this property mixed-use. The properties to the south and east of the OG property are zoned CH, that's Commercial Highway District. Their request is to zone this property to CH. And then the third part of the request, as I mentioned, is they are requesting to remove the entire area, the 7.6 acre study area, from the Wilkinson Pike buffer. I included an excerpt of the Wilkinson Pike buffer, a description of it, and it's measured at a distance of 100 feet from the southern right-of-way line into the property. So wherever that right-of-way line is, it's 100 feet to the south. And this Wilkinson Pike buffer would exclude things like structures, parking structures, accessory structures, dumpsters, storage facilities. It's called a buffer, but it isn't required to be landscape, like a landscape buffer, which we're typically familiar with landscape buffers because those are between two different types of uses. What it is, is a distance setback. So, it's a setback that requires those type of structures to be 100 feet from their public right-of-way. What can be located in there, of course, is roads like you see Willow Drive. I did go back to the 2003 minutes when the Murfreesboro Planning Commission studied the gateway design overlay district. It was brand-new in 2003. It was adopted in January 2004. And because it was brand-new, of course, they were coming up with regulations and this was adopted. I was hired the following year, so I wasn't here September 10th, but I was here just a few months later. So, I read the minutes to see what the purpose of this buffer, and they state that the additional buffer yard requirement would serve as a transition point between residents across the street and the national park. And the applicants did hold a neighborhood meeting per our suggestion at the Blackman Community Center on October 16. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter as well and discussed it at length. In just a moment, I'm going to ask Mr. Matt Taylor to come up and provide you with some additional information from the applicants. But I did want to remind you that this is a three-part request and you may wish to discuss it in three parts. Your motion, of course, you only need one motion, but it may be something that you want to discuss in three parts. One is to zone approximately 2 acres from Office General to mixed-use. Number two is to rezone approximately 5.6 acres from single-family to mixed-use. And the third part of the request is to remove the Wilkinson Pike buffer. Planning Commission considered those items separately, but didn't make one unanimous motion that they all be approved. If you have any questions about the request, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing. And I'd like to invite Mr. Matt Taylor to let turn at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of the council. I'm Matt Taylor of SEC here in town. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. Tommy Smith, the representative on the application. We do have a brief presentation on our request of what we're calling a portion of North Church Subdivision, Section 5. Want to start by kind of going over where the property is, characteristics of the property itself. Ms. Green did a good job explaining this. It is along the south side of Wilkinson Pike. We're bounded on the west side by the Chamber of Commerce and to the east by a large single-family tract. And then to the south of us are several projects, the McDonald's, the Rooms To Go, and the Thornton's. The site itself is currently mostly open pasture or grassland. As Ms. Green said, it is a mixture of OG and RS15 currently. The property is bisected by Gresham Park Drive. Here's kind of a regional concept, what we envision, kind of the north area of Medical Center Parkway to develop out-as, as well as showing how that interlays with what has already happened on the other side of Medical Center Parkway. This plan, we feel like, finishes out the gateway's mixed-use vision that was developed well over a decade ago. And this request will allow this plan to come to fruition. Request itself, as Ms. Green said, it's just over 2 acres that we've requested to go from OG to a mixed-use. About 5.6 acres to go from RS15 to the mixed-use, and then to eliminate the Wilkinson Pike buffer along this entire stretch. With this request, we had several neighborhood meetings with the neighbors to the north of us. And coming out of that, we've made several commitments on our part to replace the Wilkinson Pike buffer. The main one of those and most essential is to construct a berm along the south side of Wilkinson Pike that's a minimum of 5 feet tall along the entire length of that request, with the exception of Gresh, in front of Gresham Park Drive. That berm would be planted with materials that are equivalent to a Type E buffer, that is the city's most intensive landscape buffer that is offered and described inside of the zoning ordinance. We would also construct a split-rail fence similar in nature and looks to what the battlefield has on the other end of Wilkinson Pike near Thompson Lane. All of these improvements, the berm, the landscape, and the fencing would be outside of any right-of-way that Wilkinson Pike would require to be dedicated for the improvement and the future widening of that roadway. We'll fully irrigate the berm and these landscaping. In addition, we intend to construct all of these improvements and plant the material in the next growing season after zoning is approved, if it is. We intend to do this before any buildings or developments start to occur directly beside this project so that these materials have time to start to mature and to fill in that landscape buffer. We're also going to provide a perpetual maintenance and irrigation of this area. And lastly, we've agreed to restrict the buildings inside of that Wilkinson Pike buffer, that 100 feet off the south side, to no more than 3 stories. We have, we envision enforcing these commitments and making sure that they're getting put in place and taken care of by enacting restrictive covenants on this property. We outlaid these commitments in a letter to Planning Commission and since that time, we have drafted a set of restrictive covenants, which you should have on your desk. Our intention would be to record those before we come back for second and final reading before council. Some of the details on the berm, here's a blow-up of the area. The berm would be, the limits of the berm would be basically what we show in the dark green that you see just along the south side of Wilkinson Pike. As I said, it would be a minimum of 5-foot-tall berm. The plantings on top, at the time that we plant them, would be approximately 6 to 8 feet tall evergreens. On the slope toward the road, we envision those being shade trees and ornamentals to provide some variety, as well as intermixed lower-lining shrub to fill in any gaps closer to the ground level. This is a version of the berm, what we think it'll look like at planting. And then as it matures, this is predicted 10-year growth in. And then we will, here's an example of the fence that we would intend to build in front of that berm along Wilkinson Pike. We've also performed some sightline studies, measured at various locations from homes within, along Gresham Park, or not Gresham Park, inside the subdivision to the north, and then on Wilkinson Pike itself, and how this berm would affect that with the plantings in relation to any potential 3-story buildings in this 100-foot buffer area. We've also placed the Embassy Suites, since it's an existing building, to give you some reference for what that would look like. This one is from the houses that are on Highland Park Drive, the street that approximately parallels Wilkinson Pike. This is from a location of where the houses used to be that would front on Wilkinson Pike. And this is from Wilkinson Pike itself. You can see that those, with a mature buffer, those sightlines will be greatly reduced and create a nice ambiance as you drive down Wilkinson Pike. I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing that you might have for me or Mr. Smith.
Mr. Taylor, so the plan that we've got, that I guess...
Yes, sir.
Is there going to be a question for Mr. Whitaker, where he is, or Ms. Green? But the, where we've got sort of the over, the master plan, we're not considering all of the individual items of that master plan tonight, are we?
Yes, sir. And they would be required to get their master plan approval from the Planning Commission, but this is just a concept to show what they think they could be done. It's just for illustrative purposes. It's not, it's not for city council to review or approve.
Okay.
Mr. Taylor, a couple of quick questions. Does, did the 100-foot buffer, did it exist when the current owner of the property bought the property?
January 2004 is when it was put on the property. When was the property purchased? So, they're saying it was purchased after January 2004?
Yes.
All right. And then so, at some point, I read somewhere in the Planning Commission meetings, I think that there are, is there, are there any plans already, or is this, are there any plans for any of this already, any of this property, or is it?
No, we don't have any contracts on the property. As Mr. Smith has done his job adequately for Mr. Gatton, he has sold a lot of the other property on the other side of the road and is looking, and has recently completed the purchase within the last year of the Corleau property. And the Corleau property is the easternmost tract of this request. And so with that purchase, we have, we would like to start the planning and sale and contract side of this, but he's not wanted to release any of this property till we knew what we could do on this side of the street.
One question about your diagram on sightline. This property runs uphill from Wilkinson Pike. Does that consider the elevation?
Yes, sir. The elevations we took, we overlaid the aerial topography information that the city has on their website, and we picked out those ground elevations as we went up. And even did that with Embassy Suites. And the Embassy Suites is the highest point anywhere out there. Absolutely. And really, the 100-foot area that we're talking about is a much more gradual elevation change there along Wilkinson. Once you get beyond the 100 feet, it does start to pick up more there.
But this is speculative as far as the zoning goes, right? I mean, just based on experience and...
It's really wanting to get more cohesive zoning. Obviously, the, you know, we don't feel like the OG and RS15 are very usable here. And I think that's why you've seen everything else out here go to the MU or a CH zoning.
Okay. Thanks.
From planning staff and Planning Commission, I just wanted to say that we've, there's been an expectation that the OG and the RS15 would change. We've had no expectation that single-family homes would be on the south side of Wilkinson Pike there. It's not the best use of that land. When the GDO was adopted, it was kind of an experiment. I think that it's a successful, successful experiment. I think it's one of the things that I'm most proud of that I do. So, we've always expected those two things to change. The Wilkinson Pike buffer is, of course, something that's a separate matter, but those base zonings, Planning Commission and planning staff have always thought were not the best zone for those properties. I mentioned in my comments, but I didn't mention in my presentation, but I just wanted to make clear that that's something that we've discussed for years. We've just kind of put it off.
Did planning staff think differently 15 years ago when they proposed to do this?
So, 15 years ago, we hired a consultant and they came up with these regulations and this was all a brand-new experiment to us. It was something we weren't familiar with. We don't have any history. And I think even if you look at the buildings that were constructed 13 years ago... And I think even if you look at the buildings that were constructed 13 years ago to the ones today, I think we've improved through time as we've gotten to understand how the regulations work. We were very conservative from when I've read the minutes and I've talked to the folks who are here with the regulations that we were adopting, because there was a fear with the unknown. Now we don't have so much unknown because we're very familiar with Gateway and those standards and what it's done to our community. So Reagan and Smith were the consultants hired then, and it was their recommendation that we adopt this, all the, the Gateway standards. And I think they probably did some peer review cities. But there was, it was lesser known then than it is now.
Just so I understand, if we're looking at, you know, where all these are, have letters next to them, so, because right now, I think, letters E through S on the diagram are, those are all under development or some phase, most are all in some phase of development.
On the concept plan?
Yes, on the concept plan.
I believe that E through H or G are not, those are the, are the actual frontage of the Corleone property. But I know that S, R, and Q, and possibly P have either broken ground or have recently been sold, and we anticipate groundbreaking within the next six months, I would say.
So what's the zoning on VMKL, that, all of that property along Robert Rose?
MU.
Okay.
Everything, everything out here is zoned MU with the exception, anything to the east that we own of Gresham Park is zoned MU with the exception of the sliver that we're talking about tonight. And then on the west side of Gresham Park, everything's zoned CH.
And I'm digressing from the Pike. I would just ask the question, are there going to be more apartments out there? Is that what we're...
We, to my knowledge, we've not been approached by any further apartment developers.
Mixed-use zoning would permit that as a use. Multifamily is permitted as a use in the mixed-use zoning district. I don't, I mean, they may not have any intention, but I just wanted to be clear.
How many units would there typically be able to be built on 16 acres with multifamily? 16 acres is what they have listed for apartments in here? In the concept plan? I know that's not exact, but I'm just, approximately.
400, max, if they can do 25 to 1 units per acre.
Okay.
And how tall?
Apartments, so this property has the GDO 2 and GDO 1 overlay. The GDO 2 is what's in the hatched pattern, kind of the speckled. And the maximum height permitted for apartments in the GDO 2 is 45 feet. So that's a three-story. That's the same for all of Murfreesboro. And if you go further south outside of this area, then they can be taller, but not in this area because it's zoned GDO 2. And this request isn't to change GDO 1 or GDO 2 overlayed zones.
Ms. Green, I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't see the speckled. I don't know if I just can't see it or not with my eyes, but...
If I can get cable to pull the map up, on the screen?
Yeah, okay.
Or it's maybe in front of you.
Okay, I got you. I was looking at this map, I'm sorry.
This blue map, this blue line runs through the speckled area. And I know colors show up a little different. The legend here shows that if it's the manila, it's GDO 1.
I got you. Okay. So the, what we're seeing in here, letters M and V where they have the apartments, the 16 acres I was talking about, that's all GDO 1, it looks like. Is that correct? Yeah, it's right. So that would be 150 feet high?
But those are not even part of this request, though. Those are, M and V are over off Robert Rose. Those are, those are not even part of this request.
But it would certainly impact what, what goes beside it, right? I mean, that, what I'm thinking about is it might, you know, what's next door would certainly have to do with what we are doing.
You know.
It's all right.
So those are along Robert, that's along Robert Rose, it's already zoned MU.
Right.
It doesn't even touch, that part doesn't even touch the requested area.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
We'll need to conduct a public hearing for this request. I asked that the rules of the public hearing, if you'll come and speak to the podium, if you'll keep all your comments directed towards council. We'll make a list of any questions and get those answered at the end of the public hearing. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you'll have five minutes. If you're on behalf of an individual, you'll have three minutes. Anyone wish, need to speak for against? We'll open the public hearing. And I did forget to mention, if you'll also mention your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Madeline Zadi. I live at 2721 Highland Park Drive. I wanted to thank each one of you because I did get a chance to speak to all of you on the phone. And I feel much better about phones than up here. But I did want to thank you because you all had genuine concern. You listened. I hope some of you took me up on driving out to our neighborhood, specifically our property. We are on Highland Park Drive. I don't know if you can see the map, but my backyard backs up to the houses that are on Wilkinson. So I heard some things, I wanted to kind of get through what I thought, but then I heard some things that I didn't understand, so I do have a couple of questions. So first off, from our property, which I know Mr. Taylor picked something on our road as the height, but our, picked the highest part of our road. So I don't live on the highest part of our road. And the height of the chamber, which I understand is like a 60-foot building, the chamber's much lower than the new rooms to go. And the rooms to go is not 60-foot. So I want, I hope somebody came out there and got to see that. The next part is about our, our family and why we love our neighborhood. So we had a really unique opportunity to pick our property twice. We picked it when we moved from Florida, and we picked it to rebuild after the tornado. We are a homeschool family. We love being where we are, and we don't leave for eight hours a day. We are there, we are in our backyard. We, we love being near the battlefield. We use the battlefield. We appreciate it for its history. We learn about it. And so that's part of why we love where we are and why we want to preserve what we have. These proposed changes are really important to us because of the height of the buildings and the privacy, because more mixed use is, you know, it changes what we feel like will affect how we use our property. If there are hotels, if there are a ton more apartments over there, just how that's going to affect traffic, who can look down on us. So that's some of that. And it also leaves me in question on the integrity of the battlefield. I mean, when we moved up from Florida, you know, the chamber wasn't there yet, but we have had plenty of friends come in. We go into the chamber, there's a little map on how you drive down Wilkinson, you turn left on Thompson, and then to the new entrance to the battlefield. So if that was to go MU and there was commercial on Wilkinson, even with the path, you know, that, that really could affect kind of the, the whole feel of it all. So what, what, in talking to each one of you, you know, I, hopefully I conveyed that we're not trying to be ugly, we're not trying to be bad neighbors. We know that the development's coming. But we were hoping that you would really consider keeping a portion of the buffer. If the 100 feet, because they're already giving away property to the widening of the road, is more than you're comfortable with, the reason we ask part of the zoning of the buffer to stay in place is because covenants are not enforceable by you guys. And Mr. Taylor and Mr. Smith may be good neighbors, but their goal is to sell it and not be our neighbors anymore. And if I can't come back to you and the new neighbors, which is their end goal is to sell that property, if I can't come back and say, please protect me, you know, they're doing something wrong in this buffer, you're not going to, you're not going to take them to task over covenants. And then I, you know, I'm me, I don't, I can't sue them. So that's, that's the biggest reason we're begging for part of the buffer to stay intact, is so that you can control that zone for the future. And then the last thing is that it is an end game for them to get it ready to sell, and we have 30-year mortgages. So, you know, I just want you to take that into consideration. What I heard real quick, and I, and I did make some copies, I don't know if I'm allowed to give them to you guys, but they said that the plan has always for those properties not to be what they're zoned. And I have the minutes of a 2009 meeting in October. We were still building our house after the storm. And, and I'm going to read it to you real quick, but I made copies if you want it. It said, "The planning staff had the opportunity to discuss the matter with the applicant, which is Mr. Smith. He has indicated that he understands and accepts that the area zoned OG along Wilkinson Pike perhaps should remain zoned OG. OG is a good transition zone and can be compatible with residential properties, as been well demonstrated in other areas. The height limit of 35 feet is not inconsistent with his current plans of those two areas." So that implies that both the, the planning staff and Mr. Smith, not in 2003 or 2004, talked about those properties staying OG. So it's, that's a little bit confusing when I just heard that. And I wanted, and I have copies of those minutes if you want them. So our biggest thing is, can we please keep part of the buffer? And, you know, we would be much more comfortable with offices. You know, that's up to your wisdom, but, but we appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you. If you want to, you can give those to Mr. Lyons, and he'll pass them around. Thank you very much.
My name is Pat Bowlin. I live at 2512 West Park Drive. And I too thank all of the council members for listening this week. That's, that's been a very favorable experience with the residents of the neighborhood, and they appreciate you getting all of the emails that you got and the telephone calls. We appreciate that. In listening to what Matt had to offer is that back before there was a Medical Center Parkway, and when there were cows in the field across the street on Wilkinson Pike, and the, and the gateway was just a, the beginning of an idea, and coming together, the city met with the residents of the Wilkinson Pike area, which was Manson Pike then, because that's all there was. And they went over all of the plans, and they said, "We're going to protect you, and the way we're going to protect your residential area and your residential way of life is with the buffer." And the people in the neighborhood took that to heart. There was not much movement out of the neighborhood, our neighborhood has remained still very stable, because we believed what was told us at that point in time. In 2009, Mr. Gatton requested that the buffer be removed, and the council, City Council, did not pass that. The buffer was left in place. As far as the MU zoning goes, that's a extremely liberal zoning. It allows for, in the GDO 1, it allows for the building height to be 150 feet. In the GDO 2, it allows for buildings up to 75 feet. There's not another part of the gateway that has the residential area, established residential area like we do. MU is not compatible with our neighborhood. It, it's, like I said, it's, it's a very liberal zoning for commercial. It has its use over on the Medical Center Parkway, but we are still a residential area. And as I said, when all of this first started, we were promised by the city to be protected. And I'm going to read you something. As I was going through everything today, and I even went back and read through all of the zoning ordinances on the city website. And I'll tell you, that took a while. But anyway, under Article 3, which is the Gateway Design Overlay District, Part A is the purpose and the intent of the GDO. And it said, this is part of it, it says, "The intent of these regulations to establish, is to establish standards that will be reflective and protective of the community amenities and historic sites along Medical Center Parkway, Fortress Boulevard, Thompson Lane, Robert Rose Drive, Wilkinson Pike, Manson Pike, and the other streets in the Gateway Design Overlay District, and to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County." Now, when you're talking about quality of life, and you're living close enough that you can see a 75-foot building from your front yard, your side yard, and your backyard, I'm sorry, we know that growth is coming. We know development is coming. But this says, and this is the 2017 regulations, that its purpose is to provide quality of life for the citizens. Another thing that it states...
Ms. Bowlin, I hate to interrupt, but I'm already at four and a half minutes, so if you could...
Okay, I have one thing left.
Wrap up pretty quick, that'd be great.
The other thing it says on this is to recognize and support the historic significance of the Stones River National Battlefield and the other related areas with historic significance, and to minimize the negative impacts of development in their vicinity. When you take away the buffer, it is not going to be regulated down to 35 feet. That is the restriction of the height due to the buffer. That's why we're asking for the buffer to remain. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Mike Lyles. I'm a resident, live at 2421 Old Nashville Highway, in, in that area for a long time. In fact, I came before this City Council in the 80s as a county commissioner for the 20th District. And at that time, I requested that we extend a little road called Thompson Lane. And with that, I got approval. We were able to build a bridge over Old Nashville Highway, over the railroad tracks and connect Old Fort Parkway to Broad Street. So that opened up this area. I had a vision at that time that it would open up this area and change the kind of the county from that direction. It did more than just what I was expecting. It did a whole lot more, and it's brought a lot of wealth and growth to the, to the, to this area. I come before you tonight to speak in opposition to this zoning. Even with the planning and desires that I had to see this grow, I think that we always envisioned a protection for the neighborhoods. Even in that early, early meetings in the 80s, we talked about it. And Mr. Henderson laid forth a great plan, but quite frankly, it doesn't offer any protection for Stone River National Battlefield or the residents. I'm president of the Friends of Stone River National Battlefield, and I oppose this on behalf of the battlefield, the friends, and the neighbors. The only thing that we have to protect us is the zoning. Now, we know that the road's going to get wider, there's going to be more building, more congestion, but the original plan always protected the residents and Stone River National Battlefield. This completely removes it. Please don't allow this to happen. Our battlefield is too important to us. The area that the battle was fought in is now, much of it is asphalt and concrete. If the height restrictions are removed, if the buildings are built, it'll remove all the character of that battle, of that battlefield. We have a great opportunity to, to maintain the battlefield. We have a great opportunity to protect it. All we have to do is leave the zoning and buffers in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyles.
My name is Dylan Willis. I live on Highland Park Drive. I will speak only on one concern, and that's traffic. It's my understanding that if you, the council, choose to vote on the plan as proposed, that it will cause us problems in our neighborhood with traffic. I understand that there's a development down Asbury Lane for two subdivisions, one of 100 houses approximately, and another approximately 200 houses. If you know how Asbury Road runs into Medical Center Parkway right at the interstate, can you imagine people from... you imagine people from three hundred additional houses coming up Asbury Lane to get on Medical Center Parkway to get on Interstate twenty-four? I can't even envision it. Those people are going to end up coming through our subdivision and out West Park Drive. They either do that or they have to come all the way around Old Nashville Highway to get back to Murfreesboro. And it's my understanding that those two subdivisions are coming. My concern is the traffic at the intersection of Wilkerson Pike and the new proposed development and our subdivision. If you allow the traffic to come out of the new proposed commercial development at the intersection of Wilkerson Pike and West Park, we only have one entrance and one exit, and that's West Park. If you allow the traffic to come out of the commercial development and dump on Wilkerson Pike, it'll be right on top of us, blocking or interfering with our only exit and entrance. And if those two projects down on Asbury are developed, those people are going to come through our subdivision and add to the problem. So my concern is the street coming out and intersecting there. If you go with the plans as proposed by, uh, Tommy and Matt, my suggestion is, is take the exit street out of the commercial development and run it up to Gresham Park Drive. So it will not intersect with our only entrance and exit. If the berm is built, make it solid. So our neighbors that have water problems, their water problems will not be increased with the commercial development, but the berm would protect them. The second thing is, a solid berm would protect us some if you choose to go with the development. But again, I'm thinking about the beauty of Wilkerson Pike and the National Battlefield. Wilkerson Pike needs a split rail fence, trees on both sides. It needs to be beautiful. Murfreesboro is a geographical center of the state of Tennessee. We're not the center just because we're sitting in the center. We're in the center because the city council has been forward-thinking, has been very future-oriented, and made plans. Murfreesboro is the best city I've ever been around and I've moved around for thinking in the future. And I want to see you continue that. I love growth and I love opportunity for my children and my grandchildren. You have provided that. University has. Your cooperation with the university, our battlefield, the soccer park, the tennis courts, you have done so much to make this city so grand. Don't screw up Wilkerson Pike. Please? Because that's where the Chamber of Commerce send people to go see the battlefield. If you don't believe it, stop at the chamber and ask them how to get to the battlefield. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be contacting you after this for you to be the official spokesperson for the city of Murfreesboro moving forward, so. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Brenda Waters. I'm the, I'm the fortunate enough person to be superintendent of Stones River National Battlefield and I am very happy to be here. Mayor McFarland and city councilors, it's an honor to have this opportunity to speak with you tonight on such an important and serious matter as the rezoning or removal of the hundred-foot buffer zone that helps to protect Stones River National Battlefield by preserving that historic characteristics along the corridors that lead to the national park. We are Murfreesboro National Park and we're happy to be there. Like Yellowstone, the Grand Canyon, Great Smoky Mountains, Gettysburg, and the four hundred and seventeen unique places across the nation, we care for and interpret our most precious and natural-cultural resources for all Americans to enjoy. We have become the central park of Murfreesboro. We provide a place for members of our community to enjoy a range of recreational activities while learning about our shared past. Stones River National Battlefield is the largest tourist attraction in Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. Last year, we welcomed three hundred and forty-one thousand visitors to the park. Based on estimates from two thousand and fifteen, those visitors spent more than sixteen million dollars locally and we supported nearly two hundred and fifty local jobs. That represents more than twenty-one million dollars contributed to our local economy. One of our major purposes is to serve the increasing number of visitors by providing them with exceptional opportunity to experience the Battle of Stones River on the very ground where the fighting took place. It's no easy task when the park preserves just fifteen percent of the greater battlefield. We need your help as the city leaders to help us create a sense of place along the roads and trails that connect people to the park, particularly on Wilkinson Pike, which played a key role in the battle. Maintaining that one hundred-foot buffer zone will allow visitors to experience a more naturalized setting along the road corridor and help them to connect their approach to the park's cultural landscapes, making it possible for them to better appreciate the scope and the scale of the battle. Many of our visitors stop, as you've heard, at Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce Center. I stopped there the other day and they gave us directions. Yeah, we tell our visitors, "Go out the back on Wilkinson's Pike, go down the road and hang a left on Thompson, you'll be right there." So that is a very, very, you know, active connection there. We hope someday that we'll have the option to walk or bike the rest of the way on the mixed-use trails that connects to the park. Reducing the buffer zone will diminish that visual corridor and the connections between the park and the historic Wilkinson Pike corridor for drivers, bicyclists, pedestrians alike. The traffic on Wilkinson's Pike will continue to increase as more property is developed and the road is widened. We understand that the city is growing, but the land around the battlefield needs to be developed with special care and foresight. We want to work with the city to build aesthetically inviting connections between the city and the battlefield. I placed a map that has those connections and corridors on your, your table for each of you to see and they're like the purple squiggles that are there. And those are areas that are entrance ways into our park. Years ago, um, the people of Murfreesboro, along with the leaders of Murfreesboro, identified the areas around the park that they need special protection from the growth that we're experiencing right now in Murfreesboro. In their wisdom, they determined to protect the park with that hundred-foot buffer zone and to zone around lands around the park so that growth would not negatively impact the hallowed ground that is preserved by the National Park Service. Where more than twenty-four thousand soldiers were killed, wounded, or captured during one of the pivotal battles of the Civil War. It's my understanding, as we've heard tonight, that Mr. Smith purchased these properties knowing that the buffer zone was there to protect the battlefield and its approaches and should be asked to abide by those strictures that he agreed to. We would request the city to retain the hundred-foot buffer zone on all of the property along Wilkinson's Pike and to allow the rezoning of the residentially-zoned property to General Office, OG, and not mixed-use. This will allow the developer to build while also allowing the city to work with the landowners along Wilkinson's Pike and with the park to improve and create a safe route that allows our visitors to enjoy the historic and natural beauty of our community as they enter or even pass by the park. I look forward to working with you, with all of you, to make that vision become a reality. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. I also have an invitation up there for a nice event that we've got coming. Hope you all come.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Mr. McFarland and city council members. My name is Trish Marshall. I live at two four eight seven Cross Park Drive. Thank you for allowing the residents of the affected neighborhood to attend this meeting. I'm sure your council members know and realize that a person's home and the property it sits on is very important. It's probably the biggest investment the average citizen will make in their lives. And the decisions that are made regarding their neighborhood will affect their quality of life. We bought our property in two thousand and three. We liked the farms, the cows and the bulls that were around, the historical Jenkins House that no longer exists, the battleground. Now, most of those things are gone except for one farm and thankfully, the battleground is still there. I would like to ask you to be thoughtful and be considerate of our lives. Think of what if this was happening at the front door to your neighborhoods? Would you welcome the loss of green space and mature trees that prevent flooding and erosion and provide a sight and sound barrier? Would you welcome more asphalt parking lots, more unnecessary businesses, one hundred fifty-foot tall buildings, more traffic congestion, more loss of historical places? What would you want for your own neighborhoods? Please be mindful and meaningful in your decision and do not allow the rezoning to MU. Let the OG zoning stand and leave the Wilkinson Pike one hundred-foot buffer zone in place to protect from having three-story buildings directly in front of our neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration to us who have lived here for years and want to continue. Please don't shut us out.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Benjamin Harper. I live at, uh, two six eight six Wilkinson Pike. And that property is directly on the corner of Wilkinson and West Park. So when I heard about these plans from my neighbors, I was a little alarmed. Um, it's basic, this, these plans would be basically right and across from my front yard. And I would just like to second everything that, uh, all the other residents have so eloquently, uh, put forth to you this evening and I would like to second the request to retain the buffer zone. Um, I've lived at this property for almost twelve years now and it has grown immensely and I too realize that, uh, it will keep growing. But, uh, it's a great neighborhood. The battlefield is a very special place. I enjoy taking everyone that comes to visit, uh, family and whatnot, uh, to that area. And it's, it's just a great place. And, uh, you know, these, uh, plans are a bit disconcerting. It's just, I think the buffer zone is very important. And, uh, like I said, I would just like to stand in solidarity with all the residents previous who have spoken this evening. And, uh, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Harper.
Good evening. My name is Catherine McKinley. I live at two four six eight Cross Park Drive. Um, I'm also representing my neighbor Caroline Hampner who lives at twenty-four seventy-one Cross Park. She's been there for thirty years. Um, my husband and I bought the property, our property in two thousand and seven, so we are, uh, ten-year residents of the neighborhood. As you know, uh, this neighborhood has been thriving for over thirty years, enjoying the peacefulness of Rutherford County adjacent to the Stones River National Battlefield. When we bought our property, uh, this neighborhood seemed to us to present the very best of both the city of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. Uh, however, we believe the character of the neighborhood is being threatened by these proposed changes. Um, not long ago, Wilkinson Pike was primarily residential before the Gateway project took off and that has created burdensome traffic, uh, from both ends. Now, while we understand and appreciate that development and change are necessary to growth, we hope you'll appreciate our concerns and wishes to protect and preserve the attributes of our neighborhood that make it so desirable. Our fellow homeowners are relying on you, the city council, to keep your promises that have been made to protect our neighborhood. Specifically, we are asking that, uh, the rezoning be limited to OG, that the mixed, mixed-use zoning be rejected. And also, we request that you seriously consider maintaining the, the buffer zone. That is the most important part of this whole thing, in our opinion, uh, because it affects not only the traffic, but, uh, the whole appeal of the Wilkinson Pike corridor. We believe that there are fair compromises that can be made, uh, but the project as it stands right now, the zoning request that has been made, uh, we hope that you will reject that, um, so that we can preserve our neighborhood and still allow for, for growth in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Robert Stroup. I live on Highland Park Drive, two blocks away from this area. I was born and raised in Rutherford County, spent all my life either in Rutherford County rural or in the city of Murfreesboro. If the Lord spares me for two more months, that'll be ninety years. For at least approximately two-thirds of that time, Wilkinson Pike was known as Manson Pike. They changed it back to Wilkinson Pike and I wondered why and they brought me up on history. They told me why it was involved in the Battle of Stones River. I accepted that as a good idea to change the name back. The authorities at that time saw fit to put a buffer zone in there for the purpose of preserving the history of that. And I would ask you, if you see fit, please let us continue to preserve history. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stroup.
Good evening, council. My name is Jim Trasport and I live on Highland Park. Uh, I'm a new resident somewhat to, uh, Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. Uh, we originally came here in oh-eight and now we're full-time residents and, uh, mine's a little bit different spin from everybody else's in that I have four granddaughters here that are witnessing the democratic process tonight and I'm really proud of that fact. I don't think there are probably too many grandfathers that could say that. But I couldn't agree with Ms. Waters more than, and others. The thing that, uh, really enticed us here was the battlegrounds. And, uh, when I viewed that and I sat through that, uh, that video, it was very emotional as it is tonight to know that, uh, so many people on both sides, uh, dedicated their lives, uh, to their cause and by the grace of God, we have what we have today, a democratic society and a union- union. And if nothing else, whatever comes about tonight, it was something I heard today about Walt Disney that intrigued me. It said that when they dedicated Walt Disney World, obviously, he wasn't there. And the speaker said that it was unfortunate that he did not realize his dream. And when Walt Disney's wife came to the forefront and she spoke, she said, yes, he did realize his dream, because if it wasn't for his dream, it wouldn't have been realized that day. And so I think it behooves all of us, and I entreat you all, to consider all that's been said tonight, not only for yourself and for your children and your grandchildren, and in my case, maybe great-grandchildren, to preserve the Stones River and what it really provides for us in history. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Trashport. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. Seeing no, we'll close. I'm sorry. Is someone else wanting to speak?
Will you come to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing again.
Hi. My name's Benjamin Arnold. I live at 2458 Cross Park Drive. And I've, I've lived in this neighborhood, well, for about 23 years now. I've, I've been, that was the house I was basically born in. I've lived in that neighborhood my entire life. And growing up there, I've, I've seen how the area has been developed over the last several years. I remember when they first built Medical Center Parkway and how they brought so much more growth and business to the area. And I liked that they kept it on Medical Center Parkway without putting it on Wilkinson Pike, because as several people have said, Wilkinson Pike is a path toward the battlefield. And it's also the street that my neighborhood exits to. And I've, once I started driving and got job, I realized that this really is a historic place. And I've also noticed that in the last couple of years, it's been a little bit difficult to get out of my neighborhood with, with traffic. I understand that, you know, that's, that's, that's to be expected. But I'm, I'm just concerned, and I wish that the buffer would remain in place so that I would, it, it's a beautiful area. I'm, I'm sure most of you have been around to see it. It's, it just, on Medical Center Parkway, you've got the growth of new business. Murfreesboro is booming. But on Wilkinson Pike, you've, you've got that history of the Stones River Battlefield. And I, I just feel like removing that buffer would detract from that and not only dump more traffic on Wilkinson Pike, but also give it, take away some of its significance as regards to the battlefield. That's why I oppose the removal of this buffer, and that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Char.
My name's Wendy Glass. It's a pleasure to, to be here tonight. I'm, live at 2681 Cross Park Drive. I'm here to speak for, for other neighbors as well as myself. My mom lives at 2675. She's been there for 30 years. Candy Call lives at 2655 Cross Park. Chris and June, Chris and Cindy Ayers lives at 2626 Cross Park. And Nancy Hayes lives on the other side of me, and I can't remember the number. But I, I have spoken with all of them, and so I'm here to speak in behalf of them as well. I've lived in the neighborhood for 15 years and obviously seen all the changes we've discussed and agree with everything that's been said already. And all of the people I've mentioned are asking to preserve the buffer and to vote no to the zoning. So I wanted to make that statement. I do have a couple of letters I will give, as I told them I would. And I did want to address a couple of things that, that I heard during this. There was a comment about, you know, if we can get some of this done, it will finish the Gateway Plan. I'm not sure what that means, but I know there's a whole lot more to that plan, because I've talked to people on the planning committee, that there will be more developments, even down toward the end of Wilkinson Pike. So I don't think it's the end. I think it's just the beginning, really. There, again, the commitments are appreciated, but as far as keeping the, the size of the buildings and the berm and all that is very much appreciated. But it can't really be monitored, or we really can't do anything about it if the owner chooses not to, to go forth with those commitments. Also, even having the berm would cause even more water to come down onto our properties. This has been an issue for a long time, and it still is. There's many times with heavy rains, we have to drive very slow on Wilkinson Pike because of the water. And this is still an issue. The traffic, obviously, is probably one of our biggest concerns. Right now, it's very difficult to get out of our neighborhood. And even with the proposed widening, it's not going to, we don't know when that's going to happen. If we could be assured the widening's going to happen before all the development, that would be nice, but it doesn't happen that way. So until it is widened, and there's no reason to put more traffic on Wilkinson Pike. It's already backing up down Gresham Park. And, you know, people that are not from our neighborhood and just using it as a cut-through are speeding. So there is a lot of concern for the traffic, obviously. And the other thing I wanted to mention in behalf of, of my neighbor Nancy Hayes, she, the tornado took a lot of our trees from the neighborhood and the battlefield. A few, just maybe a couple of years ago, TVA came and took 90 of her trees and some more throughout the neighborhood. We have lost a lot of the naturalness of our neighborhood already. We have lost, you know, any kind of noise buffer, sight buffers. I mean, I, I used to couldn't see Wilkinson Pike when people were driving down it. Now, from my house, I can see every headlight, because we've already lost a lot of the environmental part of our, our neighborhood. So we ask you to help us protect that. And, I mean, do we really need more convenience stores, more hotels, more apartments in that area? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Glass.
My name's Greg McKinley. I live at 2468 Cross Park Drive.
McKinley?
McKinley.
Okay.
I appreciate the plan that they put in place. I liked the berm that they proposed. But one thing I might suggest, and my wife and I visited the planning council here earlier this week, and they've told us that Wilkinson will be widened to a three-lane and then subsequently to a four-lane, as required. If you're going to widen to twenty, uh, four lanes, that's going to need an additional 25 feet of property. Are you going to take it to the south? Is it going to come out of that berm, and the berm's then going to be gone? Or do you require the 100-foot berm, or 100-foot buffer put in your berm, and then you can put the roadway? Because you're going to have to come all the way to Thompson Lane. Where are you going to take that land? Because right now, the traffic on Wilkinson has doubled or tripled over the last 10 years, and it is difficult to get in and out of our neighborhood at times. And if you're going to bring people through Asbury, we're really going to have a problem. So I'd ask that you please consider those things before you make this change. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McKinley. Anyone else?
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm Tommy Smith. I live at 710 East Main Street here in Murfreesboro. We are developing the area out there known as the Gateway Area. And over the years, we, we have been told that we've done a relatively decent job of what we've built out there. In this situation here, the planning commission has approved it 100%, trying to do good planning, getting our zoning together, and that, to, to, to try to, to keep the entire program in a position that, that it should be as far as good planning is concerned. When we look at the Wilkinson Pike area, and, and we start down at the Thompson Lane, coming back toward the, the, coming to the west, we don't have any buffers down there, even though that there's a hospital being built down in that area there. We, we come on up a little bit further up there, and the, the city of Murfreesboro has built a pumping station right in the buffer, in, in the area that we're talking about, right there at the corner of Robert Rose Drive. And then, if you come on down to the far end, west end of that, you'll find that the Chamber of Commerce is sitting there. And at that point, the buffer was all, all the way down there, and we removed that buffer for the benefit of the Chamber of Commerce. Basically, of course, our position is, is that when we offer and build the buffer, as we have said, it will actually improve the entire area. If we don't build it, and if it just sits there, it will be just a piece of dirt that, that, with, with no vegetation on it. The buffer that, that we're talking about will be maintained. The, it'll be irrigated, and it'll be well-planted. I think it will be a beautiful addition to the community, and I think the entire community will be quite proud of that once we get it done. Thank you very much, and look forward to seeing what we can do here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay. Seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider for passage on First Reading, Ordinance 16OZ60, to rezone an area along Wilkinson Pike and Gresham Park Drive to Mixed Use District 2016-448.
I have a question.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Excuse me. Regarding the buffer, is it possible that we can make a compromise on the buffer? I don't know who I can ask this question to. Ms. Green, okay, thank you.
Ms. Green, before you answer that, can, one, one question. I want to make sure, are we taking all of these individually, or is it, it looks like, is it all are being rezoned to MU and, and then the buffer as well? Or is it all to MU and the buffer?
You can choose to approve the entire request as submitted. You can approve to, you can approve a portion of and deny another portion of the request, or you can, or you can deny the entire request or defer it, of course. So I separated it for ease of discussion. I think it's easier to discuss the request into three parts, although it's one application that you'll be considering.
So on, on Mayor McFarland's point, since this is, you know, the Wilkinson Pike buffer is its own, you know, chapter in the zoning code, do we have, whatever we do to that, do we need to keep it separate, though? I mean, will it need to be its own separate?
It's easier for, for Mrs. Michado and I, if you, if you maybe talk about these three things separately. It's one request, but I think we can understand what you want if you talk about them separately.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify what he said. Thanks. What were you saying?
So that helps everyone understand a little better. So Ms. Green.
Sure.
Ms. Gels Harris' question.
You, you asked if there could be a compromise on the buffer. They've asked to remove that entire 100 feet off the property. It's my understanding, and Mr. Tintendell can correct me if I'm wrong, that you can recommend less than that. So if you, if you wanted to do 50 instead of 100, that's your option. You couldn't go beyond what they requested, but you certainly, I think, could, could do a portion thereof. So if you wanted to do 10 feet or any portion of that 100, their request is an entire 100, but you can approve anything less than that, if that's what your decision is.
Yeah, I was looking at the map, and I'm just trying to possibly come to a compromise, if we can. The area to the west, the OG to the west, if you're going to remove anything, possibly remove that, but leave all the other?
That, and you could do that as well.
If they have to remove something?
You could do that as well. You could, you could leave on or take off the OG and then do something different on the other parcels.
Okay, I'm looking at.
What you couldn't do is say not mixed use, but OG.
Right.
You couldn't, the base zoning, they would have to go back through the process to change their request, because it's not considered a downzoning.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Say that again now.
So the, you couldn't say you're approving it not as mixed use, but you're approving it as, like, this RS-15, most of the property is on RS-15. You couldn't say you're approving it as OG, because that's a different category.
Oh, okay, that, the RS-15, but.
Right.
So, you know, I mean, since, here's kind of a general thought of what I feel like, you know, I, I might support would be something to the idea of remove the buffer on the west side, but leave it OG, keep the buffer on the east side, and approve the MU. Is that, is that all possible?
You could remove it on the west side and also deny the OG, the request to go from OG to MU, right? And you could also approve the request to remove it from the RS-15 and then change RS-15 to mixed use. That's what you said.
And keep the buffer.
Or you could keep the buffer in any case.
All down the, okay.
So you're saying?
I don't know, I'm.
The same thing I was saying, to, to the west of it?
To the west of it, but yeah, I mean, I'm more inclined.
And then keep all the rest?
To want to keep the OG on the west side.
Oh, I was looking at just the opposite.
The height, well, just because of the height issues, you know, right there next to the chamber, so that's.
The Chamber of Commerce did get several variances to even be able to construct on that property. They got variances from, we require a, a buffer. They got a variance from that. They got a variance to allow it to be its height, because that height wasn't permitted. And then they got, they got the variance from the Wilkinson Pike buffer setback to do that as well. And then there's, there's more variances to the height, the setback, the, the building setbacks, and, and then the buffer as well. All, so there were quite a few variances they had to get just to construct that lot, just for us to construct on that property, because it is a city project. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So council, do you want to take these, all three separately? So, council, do you wanna take these, all three separately? Or we can-
Let me ask one more question, Margaret Ann. You know, the correct, the suggestion was that Wilkinson Pike's going to be improved. We all kinda know that there's some, something on the board. When we talk about a construction of a berm, the five-foot berm landscaping, are, is that being considered? I know we've gotten some drawings. Does that consider the, is it in that, uh, is it gonna be cut off? The suggestion was that when the improvements come, the berm goes.
There will be no instance where we will allow that berm to be located in future road.
Okay.
When the road, um, it, when the city's constructing a new, new road, a three-lane cross-section with multimodal trails and sidewalks and curbs and gutters, which will improve the drainage, also will improve the traffic situation, um, we're, we'll make sure that this berm is not located in where we are going to need additional property.
And, and one other question. Beyond the 100-foot buffer, that's GDO-1 at certain sections of that?
So, um, it's a little hard to understand this map, but the speckled area that I pointed out earlier, that's GDO-2. Um, it changes colors depending on what's underneath it. That distance is 250 feet.
Right.
So the berm is actually not at, if you're thi-, if you're looking at the GDO-2, the berm, ah, sorry, I forgot it writes on there, would be less than half of that distance, so somewhere up in there. Uh, not the berm, the buffer, buffer, the buffer, this is the separation requirement. This distance is 250 feet.
And beyond that 100-foot, under that, the existing zoning, what is the height allowed, allowed? In other words, what could be built there height-wise today?
So, um, the, the height is restricted on the GDO-1 and GDO-2. GDO-2?
Seventy-five.
It, it depends on what it is. So, I mean, if you're saying maximum, you can say that. But GDO-2, an office can be 75, a hotel can be 75, and a hospital can be 75. Other commercial is 45, and multifamily is 45.
Is that GDO-2?
Two, and so that's all the speckled area.
But the-
And then beyond that, where it's the Manila area, an office, a hotel, and a hospital can be 150 feet. Other commercial 75, and multifamily 75.
And that property that's MU south of the purple line there, uh-
Is GDO-2.
Oh, it's GDO-2?
I mean, GDO-1 with the 1, 150 and the 75.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
Yeah.
So, existing, you could put 150-foot building beyond in that, in the GDO.
And we, there are other areas of our community in, in the gateway closer to the hospital where I practically beg them to build higher than four stories. Most people in Murfreesboro don't wanna build higher than four stories because of the building code requirements. They'd have to use steel instead of wood. It's, I mean, nothing's out of the realm of possibility, but it's difficult to encourage development to be beyond four stories in Murfreesboro.
See, the problem I see is that the elevation going up that hill, as you get to the top, move into that property, it gets more steep. So, you know, the, the sightline or what you see, you know, is more impacted by whatever height that you put there. So, to me, the, the berm is, if you're gonna have some shielding, you're actually gonna create some shielding of that property with the, with the, uh, construction of a berm that's not there now. Is, is, is that right, or?
That's correct, because the standards that are written now is that there's a 100-foot separation, and it's just a flat area.
It doesn't have to have a berm, or?
No, it didn't have to have berm landscaping, um, or, or buffer landscaping. So the berm will raise the height, which will shield some noise and, uh, view where, as it's written now, there's nothing that would require that. They could put their detention pond in the Wilkinson Pike buffer if they wanted, and, um, that's what the assisted living facility has done. So, that is actually the opposite of a berm.
Let me ask you one other question. When we, we, we talk about covenants not being enforceable, and, uh, but within this area, when someone comes in with a development, don't they have to present the site plan or some type of? Does that have to go through the site plan process?
This, um, in this area, it actually has to go through a more rigorous review, and it requires going to the planning commission for initial design review and final design review. And the site design standards are greater in addition to the building design, so it's not just about having brick in the gateway, but there's also additional landscaping and separation. Um, the building setback along Wilkinson Pike, if it were mixed use, is 50 feet. So regardless, the building couldn't be any closer than 50 feet, just based on setback. And then, the planning commission review would review the aesthetic and site design elements for anything within the gateway.
So enforcement of a covenant would, would be in that process, is what we're talking about?
We, the city of Murfreesboro staff will not enforce any covenants. Um, it's, we're not the ones who-
And awareness of that covenant is that, that, that covenant goes with that property?
It goes with the property, so when they submit the plans, they'll show the plans for that berm and buffer, and we'll review them to make sure that they're safe, that it'll block sight distance, and that we have the connection we need. But, um, the city of Murfreesboro doesn't have the ability to enforce those private restrictive covenants.
But they've still got to get through the process.
They still would, yeah.
Mr. Taylor, I've got a question for you. What is the-
Yes, sir.
What is the, just the rationale, or what's the thought of removing that buffer?
Uh, basically, the, the buffer at this point is completely unusable. We can't even put a parking lot in there. And so, um, we're wanting to regain the usability of our land. And, uh, as Ms. Green said, we use the word "buffer," it's really a bad connotation, because every place else that we talk about buffer in this city is associated with landscaping and walls or fences. This is really just a dead zone or separation area that, um, has really occurred, uh, well, it's just limiting the use of the property. I ca-, we can't even put a parking lot on that right now. There are, uh, in, in addition to the proposed berm, behind the berm that we're talking about building, there are additional utility easements. There is a force main, as well as repurified lines back there, sanitary sewer, all of which are gonna act as a further building restriction line, but we could at least put a parking lot on it and try to regain some of our, the usability of our land.
So, do you feel confident that if the buffer went away, that there would be no buildings or anything like that in the buffer?
Inside the 100-foot mark, um, there, there could possibly be some. But we're gonna, the, our berm is gonna be approximately 30 feet wide due to the height of it, and that may, that may vary to 35, yeah, as we go down through there. But then, behind that, there's another, uh, 20 to 30 feet of utility easements. So I think we're talking in the neighborhood of 50 to 60 feet of, basically, uh, still no buildings back there, but we could at least park on it.
You know, riding out to, uh, Blackman High School, night before last for the parks meeting, I went down Wilkinson Pike Road over into the neighborhood here and looked at, uh, their view of what they see today. And, and obviously, there is no buffer there today, and there is nothing that keeps you from looking across. This area is so flat out there, and, and I admit with what Bill's saying, there is a rise that goes across there. But, as you're driving down Wilkinson Pike, you can see almost the bottom level of Empathy Suites. And you can clearly see the, um, new building for the furniture store that's being built. It, um, I, I think that the buffer being put in place, and, and, and Mr. Taylor's got a really good point. Once the buffer's in place, we keep referring to this distance as the buffer, the buffer's the, the berm and the, um, vegetation on top of the berm. Once that's in place, what's 50 feet or 100 feet behind that is, is going to be blocked anyways. So, if it's a parking lot or it's a building that's blocked from your sightline, it's gonna be significantly different than it would be today, because today, there is no buffer and there's nothing that blocks your sightline. You've just got a straight view across there, so, um, the, 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 what we're calling the buffer, which is, which is really not the buffer, it's, it's, it's the berm and stuff that needs to be put in place. And once that's in place, and we get some sidewalks so that people can actually walk up and down this street and get this road improved, and, and, and in the bigger picture of things, once we can get some connectivity of Wilkinson Pike going across there to Asbury Lane and get Asbury Lane from dumping onto, uh, an unlighted intersection, I mean, this, this area will work, but, uh, you know, we've got one, two, three lots basically with homes on them that are kind of looking across at this buffer. Everything else is lots be- beyond those houses. And, uh, and, and I admit that, that, you know, if, if there's a tall enough building, it, I, I would say if you were at the top floor of Empathy Suites, you could look into their backyard today because there's nothing there. That buffer would help protect the view going both ways. So, I do think that there's a significant importance of, of making sure we understand when we're talking about this buffer or this berm, you're blocking the view from not only people looking from the neighborhood towards the buildings, but you're also blocking the view of those people who are in those buildings from looking back across, which there's nothing there now that prevents that. So, and, 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 and I'll, I'll finish up real quickly. I, I really do appreciate the effort that the planning commission put into this, and I, I always enjoy sitting in on the planning commission meetings because the, the people there that work on that planning commission, I think, are extremely knowledgeable of the impact of what the zoning is that they're looking at. And, you know, it, um, I, I think that there's, there's, there's a need for a planning commission, and I think they've looked at it, and I think they have voted on this and approved it unanimously. And so, I do think that there's certainly a case to be made for, um, getting this buffer in place and getting that road repaired and improved to improve the traffic and the safety situation. But, from a visibility standpoint, I think the most important thing we can do is get this road safe for pedestrian use and to get that berm and those trees in place as quickly as possible. And I think they had agreed to go ahead and put all that in place, as far as the berm and everything, prior to any construction ever starting on this project.
Yes, sir. If, if we were approved, uh, if our, if our request were approved for, uh, the removal of the buffer, then that would happen the very next growing season. I'm not a landscape guy, so I don't know if that's the spring or the fall, but, um, that will happen the very next growing season that we have.
Mr. Taylor, I just wanna make sure I understand okay. So if we've got the, the buffer that we currently have in place that would have nothing in there, no landscaping, anything, it's just a flat piece of property?
Yes.
So, if, if you install the berm, so you're gonna have a 30-foot buffer now that would have trees on, on top of it, but then, behind that buffer, you've got, what utility easements do you have that are behind there?
If you look at, uh, the cross-sectional view that I handed out, um, I think it's the last sheet. You can actually see behind there, there is a force main, a sewer force main that's back there, as well as an eight-inch sanitary sewer. Both of those will have easements. The sanitary sewer either has a 10 or a 15-foot easement beyond that line. And so, we, we approximated that sanitary sewer to be about 42 feet behind the right-of-way. And so, it's either a 52-foot or a 57-foot area where a building couldn't be, essentially.
Only 12 feet behind the berm.
So, your, your total, behind the berm, what would be your total, um-
12 feet.
Behind the berm, it's 12 feet to the sewer and either another 10 or another 15 beyond that for the easement itself.
So you'd be another 25 feet behind the berm, so-
Yes, sir.
As far as putting any buildings, is that correct?
Putting any buildings.
But, but your parking lot could go, you could put parking-
We could put our parking there, and so what that probably means with parking, a, a double stacked row of parking is 60 feet. So the building's still possibly 90 feet to 100 feet away-
Which is what it is.
From, from that, from the right-of-way.
So, from, is that from, that's from existing right-of-way, you're, you're-
Yes, sir, from existing right-of-way. And it, it would be the same for the proposed right-of-way, because whatever we build is gonna respect the proposed right-of-way. We, with every other project out here that Mr. Gatton and Tommy has completed, we have donated whatever right-of-way or land is necessary for those projects, we do the same thing here. So, whenever we start, uh, designing the berm and the fence, we would get the plans from Wiser Company, I think is the engineer doing this road design, and overlay tho- that right-of-way on here.
So, earlier you said that you did think there would be buildings inside the 100-foot, though. Is that, are you-
It's possible. I mean, if they're at 90 feet or they're, somebody could choose not to put a parking lot on their backside and build up to that 50 to 60-foot mark I talked about. I, I don't know what's gonna go back there, so, you know, I can't say 100%, but, right now, it's just a dead area. It's just, it's just useless to us.
Yeah, my, I, I can tell you, there's, there's parts of this that I like and parts of it that I don't. That's what makes this thing so difficult, why we spent so much time on it this week, you know? It's really, for me, that's what it really boils down to, and, um-
And we, and we've spent a lot of time, too.
Yeah, I know.
You know, we, we had a couple of neighborhood meetings. One of them, a, a lady inside of the neighborhood was kind enough to host us and some of her neighbors, uh, before the planning commission, uh, public hearing. Um, I set around a little card table from, from me to Ms. Jennifer up here, uh, talked about these things. So, w- we understand that they're, they're very difficult things. Uh, that, that's why we, we spent all that time, done all these graphics and these commitments. Somebody was worried about enforceability earlier. Um, they're worried about whenever the property gets sold. Uh, I believe our client, my client, has done a very good job of, uh, enforcing the restrictions that he has on the land already over the last decade and a half. Um, he brought the avenue. He's enforced that. He's enforced all the other restrictions on the other property that we've seen out there. And, uh, I think that development track speaks for itself as far as enforceability, because he does have an owners association that's set up, and he is in control of that.
Look, I'm- I was about to make a comment.
Go ahead, go ahead. No, go ahead.
No, you're fine.
Go ahead, ma'am.
No, I'm good. I, I was gonna catch myself. I was about to make a comment on-
Yeah, I just, uh, between us up here, you know, I don't wanna belabor this too much, but, you know, to me, I still, there's, again, there's kind of parts of it that I like and parts of it that I think could be better, which leads me to wanna kinda adjust it a little bit, but I don't wanna sit up here and beat it up. If there's four of you guys that wanna just do it just like it is, y'all go ahead, but I, I probably won't support it as it is right now. But I'm, I'm really pretty close. Um, I, to me, it just needs some tweaks to, to make sure we kinda have all our Ts crossed and di- Is dotted, frankly, but, again, you know, something that, like, tonight, I think I'd go with the, remove the buffer and keep the OG on that west side, keep the buffer over here and give them the MU on this side. It doesn't sound like they can, there, it's, it's gonna be difficult, and I, I think, I mean, I don't, I really don't want the, the capability for them to build a 100-foot building 50 feet off the road necessarily, behind a, a buffer that's only gonna be at 10 years old, 23 feet tall. Um, the, the, not that close.
May I suggest this, then?
Ms. Gels Harris.
With all the discussion, I'm counting now. Totally confused a little bit. So, I would like to make a motion, and please, guys, don't, don't hit me. And we defer this, and I wanna look into this a little bit more. I'm, I'm iffy on some things. I, I'm not comfortable.
Let me ask Matt this. Uh, Matt, can the, um, berm be used as an easement?
You mean as a, what kind of easement do you?
To run along with the land.
Could it be, you know, somebody did mention earlier, could it be, could we do a hybrid of the, of the buffer? And so that we still have the protection of that language, and it's not entirely, uh, on the covenants. If, if that is an enforceable action by the city, we would be happy to say that that 30 feet is, that 30 feet is the Wilkinson Pike buffer for that berm. We would be happy to say that.
I think we talked about that at planning, didn't we? Did we not?
It was our understanding when we made our application that we couldn't do that because we didn't wanna be piecemealing that as we go along through there, and it wasn't a planned development. And we couldn't do a planned development because we don't know what all the buildings and how those are gonna be oriented. But if that is a possibility, then we will commit that, that 30 feet is the Wilkinson Pike buffer in front of our property.
Yeah, I think that's the compromise, and that's the way to, to keep this thing moving from both sides.
Can we, I was just going to say, we may need Craig to look at it before we, and maybe the deferral may be the answer, and let him look at it. But, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, that's, well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. I thought we talked about this at planning, and this exact same thing came up.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm not familiar with what was talked about at planning. I think the easement, the proposal, if I understand it, and I just, I lost track right at the end, there is a proposal, your proposal is that there be an easement-
Yes.
...to accommodate the buffer. To have an easement, you need to have a party that's, that's benefiting from the easement. So, I don't know if that'd be a city easement, and then all the, the rights that go with that, we'd have to allocate. So, you know, easement's a possibility, of course, but we'd need to cover off all the, the issues that creating an easement would-
Well, one thing, one thing we may be able to do, and just because this is written into the zoning, our zoning code.
Right, right now, the buffer is.
The buffer is. So, can we just adjust the language of the zoning code, and then it, it doesn't really, it's not an easement, but it's still in the, it's still in our, our code? You know, we just change it from being 100 feet to being 30 feet, basically, and, and have some language that there's going to be a, a berm built by them and maintained by them?
Set back in place.
Here, here's, here's what I'm going to do. I, I think we probably ought to study that, and, and really, if we go that route, you know how I, I am about this stuff, I really kind of like to look at that new idea, because I, that's the kind of thing that I think is probably a pretty good idea, too, just on its surface. I don't know that I'd want to vote on it without knowing what all the implications are, so-
Is that a second?
I'll second hers and ask that you kind of look through that zoning code and what's possible and what might be. But I think that's kind of getting along lines of where, what a good compromise might be. Kurt, I'm sorry, are you cool with that? Are you, you had any other?
Let me ask, just put another fly in the ointment, or whatever it is. Is, are the 27, are the 37 feet that are, that we're, we're saying for road improvements to Wilkinson Pike and the 15-foot, foot, is that a part of what we're considering? Then, then the 30 feet?
Yes. It goes from the right-of-way. The buffers-
Well, the existing right-of-way is 60 feet?
It, the right-of-way's measured, or the buffer's measured from the right-of-way, so whenever we donate, it's with us.
Okay, okay.
I mean, we kind of, we're giving land and then taking more land.
Whatever comes that way, whatever 30 feet that way, okay.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if you guys are giving anymore or not. We, I mean, we've already got 65 feet of right-of-way there, so I, I'm not sure if that's going to get wider or not, but that's another thing that we might want to clarify.
Well, I would say that if it's there, it's because we donated it previously. So, and if they, if you need more, we'll donate more. So, we're willing to work with that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
No.
Mr. Wade?
No.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll defer. Let, let me just make one comment, and I know we're going to defer and talk about this again, but, you know, we all realize the asset of our, of our battlefield and it, and what it means to us and the protection of that. And I guess some of this visual things that are not there, when I went out there to look at this place today, there is not a whole lot of protection visually now, when we, and under the existing zoning, something could happen there. So, the berm and the, the buffer that is being projected needs to be looked at to see possibly there, and the trail that's projected to be there could be a real asset to the battlefield and be, be something very complimentary to what the battlefield's doing and not something negative. So, I, you know, I, that attracted me to the whole thought of how we could make this something that was a win-win situation. But, as we proceed, know that we are concerned about the impact of, of this development and all development on our battlefield, and appreciate all the work you guys do out there.
And I, that's, I think there's a, a good way to do that.
All right, well, now pursuant to Resolution 16-RPH 66, adopted by the City Council on December 15th, 2016, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately .36 acres located along Greenland Drive from local commercial CL District to planned commercial development PCD District, Greenland Liquor and Wine. Arvind Kumar Patel, applicant 2016-438, notice that said public hearing was published in the January 9th, 2017 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. On December 7th, the planning commission held a public hearing to consider a zoning change request for property located on north side of Greenland Drive and also along the west side of Old Last Castas Road. It's shown in the orange on the map before you. That orange does include a portion of right-of-way, so you can see the parcel line is located there. The property is currently zoned CL, that's local commercial district, and it's currently developed with a quicksack, which is a gas station and convenience market. The surrounding properties to the north and west are zoned commercial local district. Across this Greenland Drive is an institution we're all familiar with, Middle Tennessee State University, MTSU, and its own college university. And across Last Castas, well, Last Castas Road, this property is zoned RS10. Directly on the corner is a, an old boarding house, which I think probably many of us are familiar with, although right now it's vacant and, and the windows have been boarded up. It, it is owned by a developer, but we haven't seen plans for that property. The request for this property is for you to consider zoning it to PCD, that's planned commercial district. Therefore, they've submitted a specific plan in a program book that's been couriered to you and should be included in your packet, and it shows the proposed uses of this property. They have stated that their intention is for this to develop with a liquor store. As a planned development, I had them write in the list of other uses that could go here if, in the future, it were no longer a liquor store. And so, there is a use, a list of about 40 uses that are permitted. Also wanted them to expressly prohibit some uses that would not be appropriate, that may be allowed now, but would not be appropriate either because of the site size or the site design. In, in particular, we wanted to make sure pawn shops were not a potential use, in addition to beer package stores or tobacco stores. So, we know that they're going to put, or that their desire is to put a liquor store here. And they've reserved a 900-square-foot space where they could have an additional use, so we didn't want to have a liquor store and right next to it to be a beer and tobacco store. So, that isn't a possibility, and they were amenable to that. There are, of course, other uses that the planning commission recommended they add to their prohibited list of uses, and they were glad to do so. The planned development approach was, is used with this site because they are requesting for a design that's different than our typical suburban design. Typical suburban design requires the buildings to be pushed back far from the road, to have parking in the front, and, and a lot of landscaping. This site is, of course, very small, .36 acres. We encourage them, because this is at the entrance to our university, to be more creative than that and do something more in the style of the, the Boulevard or East Main Village development that you see along East Main, the, the commercial portion of that development. So, we asked them to push that building to the corner, to define that corner, add a significant pedestrian elements to the site, and put the parking behind the building, and they did that. To allow that, of course, the planned development, or the, the project has to go through as a planned development. I did mention that the majority of the building, they're anticipating to be a liquor store, but they do have an additional space which they would be able to lease. They, they would have entrance from both the front for the folks who walk, who would walk to this area, and also an entrance in the back from where the cars would park. Let's see. I'm going to invite Mr. Clyde Roundtree to the lectern. He has a presentation for you regarding this request. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, either before or after the public hearing. The planning commission did consider this item on December 7th, and their recommendation to you is unanimous that you approve it.
Thank you, Margaret Ann. Mayor McFarland, Commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree from the Hudson Steel Engineering. First, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present to you. I really don't have much more to add from Margaret Ann's presentation, except for I just want to credit the city staff on walking us through this process and as well as our client, Mr. Mike Patel, who's here tonight. As far as the, the quicksack, most of you know the building, the, the corner's become a very important corner, significant corner to the city of Murfreesboro. And our initial proposition was to re-clad the building, kind of give it a facelift and, you know, bring it into more of a contemporary look. After going through some evaluations with the city staff, that was determined that we need to raise the building in order to get the zoning. The client agreed to go ahead and take the building down, but it's still remaining in its current position with a more contemporary look as well. So, we did a site plan related to that. And then our, our third rendition is really the one that you're seeing now in the site plan, was to bring the building forward. And really, what the city staff wants to do, as well as what we really feel like would be significant, is to pull the buildings forward, really create more of a streetscape type of orientation with the building, much like you see around the Boulevard, and really begin to set the tone all the way down Last Castas with that kind of look. So, it's been a, a pretty involved process. I appreciate everyone who's been involved with that process, especially the, the client, who's been willing to go through multiple iterations in order to get us to the goal, and as well as Margaret Ann and the city staff working us through this process. So, I'm available for any questions you may have. I'm, I'm excited about it. I think it's a great-looking product, be a great-looking building, and I think our client's very excited about moving forward, not only getting liquor license, but also getting the building moving forward so we can upgrade that corner. So, with that in mind, I'm available for any questions you may have.
We're going to have a public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
I guess I'll ask a question before the public hearing. On this architectural elevation here, you know, the one thing that I kind of had a little bit of a empty spot in my gut about was, you know, just sort of the visual of, from MTSU, Murphy Center, the football field, you know, just the big giant lit-up liquor and wine sign. Is the sign that it's showing in here in the drawings, is that more like what it's going to look like, the sign, or does that, is that a, we don't know what it's going to look like?
Rick, I would say we don't know exactly what it's going to look like, but I think it'd be consistent with what you said, the Boulevard, maybe something that has more of kind of an awning-style light that would hang over versus something that would be a backlit kind of, you know, I think there'd be, I'm not sure what kind of architectural controls the city would have over that, or if they would have something to say about that, but I think there, could we qualify that, or how would that work?
Voluntarily restrict ourselves.
We have the ability to voluntarily restrict ourselves. I, I haven't spoke with the client about that, but I think the, I think everyone's involved with the process, understands there's a level of class we want to see on this corner. And again, it's kind of setting the tone for what happens down Greenland, you know, towards the, towards the west and, and down Last Castas. So, Mike, that's just something, you've been very, you know, very accommodating up to this point. That's just something we have to continue to work for.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 16OZ 66 to rezonate an area along Greenland Drive to planned commercial development PCD District, Greenland Liquor and Wine, 2016-438.
So moved.
It's going to be a very attractive store, especially compared to what we're currently looking at. I'll second the motion.
Motion's second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 16-RPH 67, adopted by the City Council on December 15th, 2016, will conduct a public hearing to consider, one, adoption of Plan of Services for and annexation of 9.1 acres, and, two, zoning of approximately 6.3 acres along Rucker Lane to single-family residential 10, RS10 district, which had been proposed to be annexed to the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Jerrion Chris Paves and laws Bolden applicants. Notice said public hearing was published in the January 9th, 2017 issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Bonley?
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of the council. If you'll indulge me for just a second, I want to make an introduction of a new staff member who's present tonight. Ms. Marina Rush, if she would stand up. She's our new principal planner, started on Monday. We're very happy to have her. She has a great deal of experience, recently moved here from California, has worked both in city government and county government in California, has worked on downtown area plans, general planning and zoning, and has some environmental experience as well. So, we are very excited to have Marina on staff and wanted to introduce her to the, the council tonight.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm very excited. I'm very pleased to work with such a quality and exemplary staff that you have here at the city. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And she's voluntarily here tonight after we told her it was going to be a very, very long meeting. So, we can already tell she's dedicated.
At least she didn't say War Eagle.
Well, yeah. Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our, our next two public hearings go hand in hand, the first of which is the annexation. It's property on the west side of Rucker Lane, 6.3 acres, owned by Mr. and Mrs. Paves. You see the big map in front of us, and more specifically, we get down to this map right here. It's just south of the Brownview subdivision, which is in the unincorporated county, and it's just across Rucker Lane from the Scottish Glen subdivision, which is located in the city limits. Mr. and Mrs. Paves have petitioned the city for annexation, and there's a companion zoning request, which is the next item on the agenda, or, which is, will be the next public hearing. But after this public hearing, we, you will consider the Plan of Services and the actual annexation of the, the subject property that's in blue before you. 6.3 acres, as I mentioned, the total study area is 9.1 acres, because we are actually including 2.8 acres of Rucker Lane right-of-way. You can see in front of Meadowwood Drive and Birchwood Circle, that right-of-way was not taken in when the Victory Station tract across Rucker Lane was annexed. And so, felt it made sense to go ahead and include the right-of-way all the way up to where the, the current right-of-way that's in the city limits terminates, and also directly in front of the Scottish Glen subdivision. So, we've included about 1,550 linear feet of right-of-way of Rucker Lane. The Plan of Services is included in the agenda materials before you. It demonstrates that the city will be able to provide services. Most all city services are readily available to the property now, sewer, water, and it is directly across from an existing city subdivision. So, the rolling sub, the rolling services are already serving properties in the area, so this should be relatively easy to affect this annexation. It is, with the annexation of the right-of-way contiguous with the existing city limits, and it is within the urban growth boundary. Mr. Bolden, representing Mr. and Mrs. Paves, is here. If you have any questions for him, I'll be happy to answer any of your questions regarding the annexation. But just for the folks in the audience, for their knowledge, this particular public hearing is just with regards to the Plan of Services and the annexation. We'll vote on the Plan of Services and the annexation, and then I'll come back up and go over the companion zoning request.
So, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on the Plan of Services for and annexation of approximately 9.1 acres located along Rucker Lane. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll consider for adoption Resolution 16-RPH 67 to adopt a Plan of Services for approximately 9.1 acres along Rucker Lane, Jerrion Chris Paves applicants, 2016-519. This is for the Plan of Services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll now need to consider for adoption Resolution 16RA 67 to annex approximately 9.1 acres along Rucker Lane and to incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Jerrion Chris Paves applicants, 2016-519. Again, this is for the annexation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
The next item is with respect to the, the zoning of the same property. Now, since we're talking about just the private property, it's 6.3 acres. You'll notice in the staff comments from the December 7th, 2016 planning commission meeting that the applicants actually requested RS8, which is single-family residential with minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet. During the planning commission meeting, there was discussion about density and the number of houses that could be developed on the subject property. And the planning commission, after the public hearing was conducted and had, and much discussion was had, decided to go ahead and approve RS10 zoning or recommend approval to the council for RS10 zoning. That was not unanimous. There was one no vote on that request. Under the RS8 zoning that was originally requested, it could be expected that there would be a maximum of approximately 25 single-family residential lots on the subject property. With the RS10 zoning, that goes down to about 20 single-family residential lots. The, this property is within the general development plan for the Blackman community, which was approved, or was adopted a number of years ago. The plan recommends PRD zoning with medium density of four to eight dwelling units per acre. With RS10, it actually falls under the, the density, with the density recommendation. RS10 is roughly between three, three and a half units per acre. So, it's actually a little bit less dense than the, the Blackman plan recommended, but it's, but it's not a PRD as the Blackman plan recommended. I'll be happy to answer any questions with regards to this zoning request before- I'll be happy to answer any questions with regards to this zoning request before or after the, the public hearing, and Mr. Bolden is here representing himself and the Pavises, who I believe will be co-developers of the property, and he'll be happy to answer any questions on behalf of the developer.
Thank you, Ms. Bonley. We'll need to conduct a public hearing to consider zoning approximately six point three acres along Rucker Lane, a single-family residential ten RS-ten district simultaneous with annexation. Loz Bolden applicant. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
My name's Hoyt Owen, and I live at thirty-five twenty-three Meadowwood Drive, which would be the property just to the west where it says area. That's my property. I'm here tonight, Mr. Mayor and councilman, councilmen and councilwomen, I guess I should say, woman, and I appreciate you giving us the time to speak. I know you must be very tired, and I just appreciate y'all even more in what you do for our community. Just, I would just ask, from the standpoint of a selfish, just my private ideas envisioned for there, that you would just reconsider the RS-ten to RS- fifteen, and the reason I ask that is when we were going through this process with Kingdom Ridge development, the compromise that was worked out in my mind, that I remember, I haven't been here quite as long as Mr. Stroop, but I've been here a while, we agreed that the property that would join any county property would be brought in as RS- fifteen, and then you could step it down as you got into your development. I would ask that you would consider that proposal, 'cause if you notice on your drawing there that to the north of this property are three nice lots, in my opinion, my neighbors, and Mr. and Mrs. Pavis are wonderful neighbors, too, and I have nothing against them, and I just wish them the very best, but if you'll just notice, there's three lots there along Meadowwood, and the new proposal that I, last I heard, there would be ten lots through there, so I'm not su, and that may be a little bit less since it's RS-ten now, but again, it's just the sheer number that bothers me. I'm a firm believer that less is better a lot of times, and I just, again, you've heard it all night tonight, the traffic, the congestion, just more and more and more, when, and this isn't, this is just a drop in a bucket, I know that, but it means a lot to me 'cause I live there. So, I would just ask that you would consider a larger lot to be more similar to the, to the lots to the north, obviously, and the other thing, as Mr. Matthew brought up, that the recommendation out there has been for a PRD, and I would strongly ask that you consider that because it just gives us a little more assurance as to what's gonna be there, and again, nothing against Mr. and Mrs. Pavis, but again, things change, so it would just be a little more comfort to us if we could, personally, if I could get a little larger lot, and then the PRD overlay on that. And again, thank you so much for hearing me out, and I appreciate each of y'all so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trowland. Good to see you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Loz Bolden, three fifty-eight Dejarnet Lane. I represent the Pavises just as a fee consultant. It is their development, and they will actually be remaining on the southwest corner of the property for some undetermined amount of time, but it won't be developed at first. A couple of things I'll add. Matthew did a great job describing what's going on. I will point out that there's quite a bit of natural buffer there now already. Hoyt planted a row of trees there along his property line, shared property line, approximately, what, twenty-six or seven years ago, and the RS-ten is what's across the street. It's overwhelmingly what we're seeing up and down, excuse me, Rucker Lane. Also, I would point out that the property is only twelve hundred and fifty feet from the Public Grocery Store, and when that road is improved and the sidewalks installed, you know, the folks there will be able to walk to their grocery store, less traffic, but we respectfully request that you approve the RS-ten zone, and be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Bolden, is there gonna be any capability that there would be ten houses along that line based on what you think with the RS-ten?
That's, that's not possible. It's, it's about five hundred feet of really developable land. It's five hundred and seventy feet deep, so probably six lots at the most.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Okay. Seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance sixteen OZ sixty-seven to zon an area located along Rucker Lane, a single-family residential twelve, excuse me, single-family residential, we have a typo there in the minutes just to make, or in the agenda, just to make sure, it says, single-family residential twelve-ten, which I don't think we have a twelve-ten district, unless the Murfreesboro twenty-thirty-five is changing that.
RS-ten is what the recommendation of the Planning Commission is.
Ten-four. All right, we have an RS-ten, so we, we'll need to make sure that, Craig, that we note that that's changed on the agenda, simultaneous with annexation, Loz Bolden applicant, two thousand and sixteen dash four fifty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll now consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board regarding a proposal to extend summer sewer credit an additional month through November billing cycle two thousand and sixteen.
Mayor City Council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. I'll be, just to describe our current issue, we had a severe drought, according to the U.S. drought monitor, at the end of October, beginning of November. That, that coincides with the end of our summer sewer credit, which runs from April through October, so we had several customers that were continuing to irrigate and had some, instead of, and they got billed sewer charges for that irrigation. So, based on this trigger point of it being such a severe drought, we are asking for you to approve a resolution this evening to extend our summer sewer credit one month. This is not something we customarily do, but we felt like this, under this situation, it was, it was appropriate and customer-friendly. We do have an application, and they will have to qualify for this one-month extension. So, with that, we would request your adoption of the resolution.
So moved.
Second. Darren, this is a phenomenal thing that you guys are doing, and I think it's a really good fix for the situation that we currently have, because some people were discussing saying that we need to change the dates and the months that we provide the service. There's really no scenario that we guarantee we'd ever have that situation happen again, so for us to go back, I think it's a very positive move for not just relationships with your ratepayers, but I think it's a, it shows fairness and consideration to the ratepayers, and I commend you for coming forward with this.
Thank you very much. I got an earful from several customers and enjoyed, enjoyed our discussions greatly, and was hoping to avoid the, those discussions coming to the council.
Ms. Wright, please come to the room.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Ms. Wright, we have one beer permit. Is everything in order?
Yes, we do. We have one beer permit tonight for a restaurant at twenty-nine eleven Medical Center Parkway. It's a new location. They do need to finish up their, their building codes inspections, but otherwise it's in order.
Okay. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have several motions and seconds. We'll then say that Councilman LaLance gave the motion, and we're gonna say that Ms. Gels Harris gave the second.
Okay. Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Ms. Jennifer Garland is being recommended to be the Planning Commission representative on the historical zoning.
Motion.
Please.
So moved.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any statements?
No, sir, not tonight.
Any other business for the staff or City Council? I know we don't say this enough, staff, we appreciate what you're doing, but council, we appreciate y'all sitting through everything that you do as well.